I'd like to call this Regular School Board Meeting in order. Roll call.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
Mr. Phallus.
President.
Mr. Smith.
President.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand. Treasurer, Mr. Weber, Superintendent, Mr. Tucker, and Board President, Mr. Damacchia, distinguished board members. Tonight, we have a fifth grade student from Admiral King Elementary School who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Ivan Markovich. Ivan is the daughter of Adam, is C.C.?
Cecy.
Cecy Markovich. Mr. Kiefer, J. Kiefer, Principal of Admiral King Elementary School, is here tonight to support his student.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Okay. Hi, my name is Ivan Markovich, and today I will be telling you what the Pledge of Allegiance means to me. When I say the pledge, I think about my freedom and justice and how I could show allegiance to my country. Everyone in our country has freedom, but not everyone respects it. We respect our freedom by following laws and saying the pledge. We should respect our military and veterans because they fight and sometimes die to protect our freedom. We have the freedom of holidays to celebrate and freedom of religion. All of this is what the word freedom means to me. We have freedom, but we also need justice. Everyone has the same justice regardless of gender, race, or religion. We have to respect those who keep our justice in order, such as police, judges, and lawyers. Some justice we have at schools that we have to be kind. To sum it up, we have the freedom to do what we want, although we need to be fair. We have freedom and justice, but we need to show allegiance. We can show allegiance to our friends and family, school, and our country. We can show allegiance to our friends and family by being there for them and protecting them. We can show allegiance to our country by protecting our rights and following the laws. These are several ways we could show allegiance. This wraps up my opinion on the pledge. Thank you for reading, listening.
I'd like for our parents, please stand. Thank you for doing a phenomenal job. Give you a round of applause. And we also have a certificate for you as well. If you'd like to also play a picture with you and the board members. Next, we have Ms. Michelle Barbosa. We'll do a, to honor our gifted students as well.
Hello, I'm here today to honor some of our students that won awards at the Young Authors' Conference. Each year, our students in our gifted program participate in the Lorraine County Young Authors' Conference. This is hosted by the ESC of Lorraine County. This opportunity is open to all public and non-public schools in the county, as well as students that are homeschooled. Thousands of students from Lorraine County work hard on writing books and illustrating them each year. Of those thousands of students, approximately 1,300 attended this year's Young Authors' Conference on May 12th. All of the students involved are required to write and illustrate their own books. Districts evaluate these books and choose which students will attend the conference, and their books are artfully displayed that evening at an open house. One book from each grade level, from each participating school, is selected to compete in the Best of Show Award. There are two categories for this award. One is a Writers' Award, the other is an Illustrators' Award, and I am very proud to say that we had three students win those awards this year. Two of our students are here tonight. They are from Admiral King Elementary School. The first student is Ivan Markovich. She won an award for the fifth grade Best in Show Writers' Award for her book titled, "A Home on My Own." And our second award goes to Brenna Goodman. She won an Illustrators' Award for her book titled, "The Monkey Race." She is here tonight with her mom and her grandfather. You want to come on up, honey? We also had an eighth grader win an Illustrators' Award. She is from Longfellow Middle School. She cannot be here tonight because she is in Washington, D.C. on a school field trip. All of these students will receive a hardbound copy of their book. The ESC will print it up. It usually comes out in the fall. They will also get a poster of the cover of their books, and we will also get posters for Admiral King and Longfellow to hang up in the hallway at their school. Congratulations. We are very proud of all of our students who won.
Would you like to do a photo, please, of our students? While you please come on up. Next, we have Lorraine Historical Society will come up and do a presentation as well for the board.
Good evening. My name is Barb Piscopo, and I'm the Executive Director at the Lorraine Historical Society. I just wanted to let you know that this year, we welcomed over 500 of your third graders to both the Morehouse and to the Carnegie Center. It was the first time that a group of students toured the Carnegie Center, because as many of you know, we are in the process of renovating that building, and it will become the home of the history of Lorraine and house exhibits for all of the city so that everyone can benefit from the rich heritage and tradition of that city. We've already started working on next year's presentation, but I just want to read to you an essay that one of the third graders wrote. They collected this nice book for me, and Pam Zegarty was kind enough to put in all these essays. This is from Kilani from Frank Jacinto School, grade three. "Today, I'm going to compare and contrast," which was the whole purpose of this, "Lorraine in 1874 and Lorraine in 2015. There are many similarities and differences between school then and now. One of the ways both are the same is that they are taught by teachers." I didn't know if she thought it was the same teacher as 100 years later, but at any rate. Likewise, classes were held in a one-room cabin near Lake Erie in 1874. Children were taught from first through eighth grade altogether in that room. Today, we have new buildings that have state-of-the-art equipment. We have smart boards, iPads, and computers to learn on. I think Lorraine is cool." And I think that pretty much sums up what the third graders thought about their visit to both the Morehouse and to the Carnegie Center. We also are going to host a Summer Art and History Camp and are inviting the third graders who toured both museums in the schools that are in our area to come to a Summer Art History Camp at the Lorraine Arts Council. And that'll be on the first Tuesday after school is out, so June 9th, 16th, and 23rd, from 10 until 11:30 in the morning. It will feature three Lorraine artists, Stephen Delhanis, after whom one of the schools is named, Lenora Tawney, and a living artist, Marie Bonamino. The students will learn about the life of those artists and then do an art craft based on their particular type of art. So we're very pleased to be participating and collaborating with the schools in this way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'd like to thank you for your partnership with Lorraine City Schools and thank our students as well. Turn it back over to the board president. Damacchia.
And then we have a presentation for the young scholars.
I bring you greetings from the Ohio State University in Columbus. My name is Rochelle Woods. I'm the Director of the Young Scholars Program, and I'm here with my colleague Pam Lamore, who is the Regional Director for Young Scholars Program based in Lorraine. And we are here today to honor our graduating seniors from Lorraine who are all attending the Ohio State University in the fall. These students have been in the program since middle school, and they have followed it all the way through and really been academically successful, involved in the community, and they have been rewarded. So we are excited to have them join us in the fall, and we are just here to acknowledge them to the board. Just going to call them up one by one.
Let's have the board members over here so when they come up, we can congratulate them.
I've had the pleasure of working with these students for six years, so it is a real reward for me to stand here today and call the names of these students that will be funded to go to Ohio State. Taylor attends early college high school. She is ranked in the top 25 percent of her class, and her class size was 63, so this is a real achievement. Next, I'd like to call Simone Brown. Simone Brown attends Lorraine High School, and Simone is ranked one of the top five seniors in the entire senior class. And that is, and that's out of 346. So go Simone! And I understand that she will be featured in the Elyria Chronicle sometime this week, so please look for that article. All right. Rodrick Davis, Lorraine High School student, top 20 percent of his class, and he plans to major in communications. And I'm sorry, I neglected to say that Simone is going to major in pre-med biology. Leasia Huddleston Partlow, who is not here today, she also ranks in the top 20 percent of her class at Lorraine High School and is going to major in communications. Next, we have Jasmine A. Jackson. Jasmine A. attended early college high school. She ranks in the top 25 percent, and she's going to major in psychology. Trevon Jackson. Trevon attends Lorraine High School, ranks in the top 20 percent of his class, and is going to major in criminology. Ricky Perez attended early college high school, top 20 percent of his class, and will major in mechanical engineering. Brianna Rivera, Lorraine High School, top 20 percent of her class, and plans to major And last but not least, Evelyn S. Weeks, early college high school, top 25 percent of her class, and will major in nursing.
Why don't we have all the important people? Only the used to be.
Oh, wait!
And I need a motion to approve or amend the signed minutes from our last board meeting held May 4th, 2015.
Motion to approve the signed minutes.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Take your time.
Yes.
Mr. Phallus.
Yes.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes. All business?
Thank you.
Report and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Damacchia. I have six things on the agenda this evening. The first one is April 2015 financial reports, standard package. 8.02 is the purchase orders over $3,000 requiring board approval. Item 8.03 is the semi-five-year forecast. I'll give a short presentation on that in a few seconds. 8.04 is the resolution to place that no new taxes renewal levy in the ballot in November. 8.05 is for the board to approve a $2.1 million infrastructure upgrade. We're going to put in over the summer. And 8.06 are some donations. I'll do the five-year forecast first.
The Howard Department of Education, it's got three years of history and five years of forecasted data. And I'll just page down to the bottom because there's a bunch of revenue expenses in there. And the good news is, is that the very bottom line here, line 1500, I'll have a little bigger numbers here in a second. You can see we're positive here for this year, at least by forecast, it's going to show a positive number of $3.7 million. $2 million positive next year and positive balance in 2017. So some detail behind that is this, it's the same numbers. I've made it a little bigger so people can see them in the back. And the two big variables in here, and the two big unknowns are always to me. First one is the cost for the package of students going to charter schools, open enrollment, and voucher programs. Those are tough things to forecast, hard to predict. The good news is that for charter schools, we are showing a flat growth from last year to this year, a growth in cost, which is really good. I put in a package of $3.5 million in cost growth last year and this year, so Mr. Tucker and staff did a wonderful job of, I think, of helping through that process there. The other big unknown in this is the state of Ohio has what's called a biennial budget. It's a two-year budget, and this current budget ends June 30th, 2015. So the budget, it will be a new two-year budget for fiscal year '16, '17. We'll know that right at the end of June. Also, big unknowns, but the governor puts his proposal out there, like in January, and he showed a very large increase for Lorraine City Schools. Then the House Representative gets a hold of it, and they brought it down a couple million dollars, bounce into the Senate, okay? There will be talking and discussion for the next four or five weeks as people do what they have to do to get those things in there. The big question is, what do I put in there for that budget? Because it drives what we're doing here. So I decided after some discussions with Superintendent Tucker and his staff, I put in additional increase of $3 million for that revenue growth, the $3 million year after, not knowing on May 18th, I don't know what it's going to be, but I'm not going to make it zero. I'm going to take a little bit of a liberal attitude towards it. I think we're going to get something like that. Other big unknown, I talked about before, is that cost increase for that combination of packages of the charter schools, open enrollment, scholarship voucher programs. Another big unknown, don't know what it's going to be, but I put in a $3 million growth a year in the model. So let's say, do a little financial modeling. By the way, the numbers here are, we're going to, I'm going to submit to the ODE by the end of the month. I'm going to lock it in. But just for illustration purposes, let's just say, okay, that we get $4 million increase for the state of Ohio budget. You can see how the numbers just got better by just a million dollars, by a million dollars a year, okay? Let's say, let's say, instead of having that cost increase, the red numbers of the cost increase for charter schools, open enrollment, and voucher programs, let's say, instead of $3 million increase per year, let's say it's $2 million. Looks pretty good, right? It's all in the black, right? Looks pretty good. So these numbers here, and by the way, the growth, the growth, that's where the charter school costs were pretty much flat. My factory and open enrollment, voucher programs, those three went by about $800,000 from last year to this year. But charter schools are pretty much flat from last year to this year as far as that growth comes. So I'm just showing you, for illustration purposes, that if you, if we get lucky in the budget, that we do a good job with those, with the students and whatnot, as far as where they're going or not going, the forecast looks pretty, it's pretty good for fiscal year 2019.
Let me make a comment on that. When everybody looks at open enrollment and open, and charters and that, you always think of number of students. They're changing the way it's going to be funded, and they're going to add additional. So it's the cost to the district for a student, not the actual number. So we could actually lose no one, and our costs could go up substantially because they're deducting more. We pay more for students going out than most people, which comes out of your local tax revenue, which I've said time and time again. So we've got to be very, very careful when you say, well, we don't lose any students for even. Well, that's not the case, because it doesn't necessarily mean. What you're looking at is dollars out the door, and that's probably the biggest variable. And this is, this is watching the line and being very, very frugal and very, very careful and being very strategic. And I'll tell you, as I retire, that I'm proud of, because when I came here, it was red all the way across. Everyone that is in this district should be proud of that, because that's one thing that you don't need to, at least, number one priority.
As of today, there has been no action out of the Senate. Probably will be three to four more weeks. The House version of the budget did come in lower for us, but better than, and I'm on board with what you're doing, because I'd rather be pleasantly surprised. But right now, if the Senate agrees with the House, we would still get an additional $5.5 million each of the next two years, which would have a drastic improvement on the forecast, but you don't know that. The governor gave us $7 million a year, and the House took away part of that, and now the Senate. There are districts, which you have to understand, there are districts that are not getting anything. And putting ourselves in the places of the Senate and House, they have people in those districts as well, so they have to not look just at Lorraine, but politically, they have to also look at every other district, and we would benefit greatly. So let's hope that...
There is another thing you need to be very, very aware of. We are on the cap, which means we could get another 1,000 students, but we're capped, so we're getting no additional funding. But if we lose students, we lose money. So we can't get any more, but we can lose more. So we're in a kind of a catch-22. It's the same way that the, whether you're on the cap or the guarantee, it's somewhat unfair, and they still haven't figured that out yet. But that is something. We've got more students, but you're capped. You're not getting any additional funding.
That's kind of the House version of it, about two months ago. I put back the $3 million cost increase for those package of costs there, so we're, I mean, it certainly is a good, good new story.
Let's see. Does our levy renewal factor in there?
It is. That's a great question. I'll show you that, how that works. That's a great question. Just so you know how this kind of works in the Howard Department of Education model, the levy starts to expire a half year in 2017, is fully out in 18, 19, because it has to get renewed before it can put it back in. But the Howard Department of Education lets you put it back in at the bottom, at the bottom of this thing, which is down here, okay? So it lets you put it back in down there for renewal levies only. It does not let you put new levies in there for any money. Only lets you put the renewals in there. So you see the top, the revenue's falling off, real estate revenue. That's because it's falling off because it has to renew, and that's why it's coming down so much, at least the top. It all comes out in the wash, okay, but at the bottom of this model, this financial model is the model Howard Department of Education sanctions. They want you to use that model.
If renewal doesn't pass, you're all in the red.
Right. If it wouldn't pass, it would look, it would look like, yes, that's how we look when it doesn't pass. Okay?
Well, I'm glad we're in a position to run and no new taxes.
Renewal.
Absolutely. Feel good about that.
Any questions about the five-year forecast?
Dale, I have a question. On the salaries, which is probably the biggest expense item, can you give me the assumptions that you use to forecast the salary expense for the next five years?
They are the, it was about 2 percent. About 2 percent.
Over the five-year period?
Yeah.
And you got step, right?
Right. Well, that's, including the step. That's, that's in there, steps, yeah.
And did you include anticipating, anticipation of retirement?
Yes, I did.
Of higher, of older, higher-paid staff replaced by lower?
Yes, we did. We did that. We also put in some other projects in there, too. We talked about the staff, of things you might want to do next year, too, also, they're student-based, whatever. Those are all baked into that forecast.
Which is the sports, the art, the music, those things, which I've been...
No, a little later on the agenda, we'll be addressing a recommendation regarding upgrading our technology.
Right.
Is that factored into the five years?
Yes, it is.
You factored in that we would follow the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
That cost is about, I'll make it run, it's about $2 million over five years, about $4,000 a year. And it also assumes that we're going to approve that. Would you ask some questions about that?
I just wanted, while we were talking about the forecast, wanted to make sure you had done that.
Any other questions about the five-year forecast?
Can we vote on it?
We can vote on it right now. Now, yeah, sure, and we'll go back to the other ones. So I'll recommend approval of the five-year forecast.
Which is item what?
8.03.
8.03.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Smith was motioned, Mr. Sturgill seconded, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
And Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
And I'm going to take a couple of these separately and go back and get the other ones.
Did you call on me, because I haven't voted?
I'm sorry. I thought I did. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
I don't know this time.
Sure, yeah.
They just forgot us.
Yes.
And Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
Okay. Item 8.04 is the approval of the resolution for the no-new taxes real estate levy, and that will be on November 3rd on the ballot.
Motion to approve 8.04?
Support motion.
Discussion?
Were we able to meet with the committee and have any discussion with them or...
Yes, we did. We had a meeting last Monday with Mr. Damacia. Yeah.
And they are...
Pardon?
What was their...
You and me, yeah.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Was there a...
Is there what?
What was their opinion?
I think they were for it, yeah. Very good.
They were basically asking us, asking us what we wanted to do and when it would come about and when it was going to run it, because we have, you have so many tries to do it. So we decided to run it because it's no-new taxes, and everybody there was in favor of it, and we're looking forward to the approval of it in the fall.
And remember, we have four opportunities to try to pass it.
Correct.
One, I think, is a special election.
Pardon?
One is a special election.
Correct.
Is that right?
It might be. I don't know. I gave it to you.
Which has a cost to it.
Hopefully, we won't need that.
Yeah. So we want to really get it this fall and get it out of the way.
They all have a cost. It just, it's, like in November, it'll be spread over a bigger volume of precincts and cities or whatever. Yeah. Yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Damacia.
Yes.
Okay. Item 8.05 is the considered approval of the lease agreement with the PNC Bank to upgrade the district infrastructure, just the one we talked about. It's $2.1 million over five years. And any questions? And, um, any questions? Mr. Hawks or Desneek can answer those questions about some of that.
Let's, uh, I guess we can have that during discussion. I gave a motion for item 8.05.
Motion to approve it. Item 8.05.
Second.
Discussion.
Now, I want to make, I understand the need. What is the anticipation of how long the technology will stay relevant?
That's a good question. The way that we have the network now, it's end of life. Uh, the way that Fred and I have designed the, the new system, it's scalable so that in the event that instead of having to shell out a large sum of money at one given time, it's all going to be able to replace bits and pieces going forward every three to five, in a three to five year cycle, like traditional technology is replaced. So things will never get to the point as we have now where we can't get software, we can't get...
Why did you bring that up?
It's going to be to the point where if one blade goes bad in a server, then you can replace the one blade instead of having to replace the entire chassis that goes with it. If the software needs to be upgraded, then we'll be able to replace the software with the software upgrade with the service agreements that, that run all those blades.
So we're, so we're in pretty bad shape right now.
We are using servers for tech directors ago that are...
Twenty years old.
Twenty years, that's the oldest one, 20 years old and, and we pray every day. How many of you have a computer from 20 years ago? That would have been 1995 when Lorraine High closed.
I remember about a year and a half ago, you mentioned that this was coming and I, I remember standing in the hallway, we were talking about it and so on. Must have been on your list.
This has been on my list. This is the first opportunity we have. You have online testing coming, whether, whether, even if it's reduced, it's coming. And the other thing is we've got plenty of, of great devices that we can't control software-wise where there, there are times we need to turn off all the outside wireless, people that use our outside or use our wireless from outside that we need to focus just on education. This will allow us to throttle that and adjust that and control who went on our network. And so, so when the time comes, it's not 70% of our things are iPod and iPhone updates, which we can shut those down so we can use them for what we need. And you also know, you've been in our buildings, I may have access and then Mr. Williams sitting 15 feet away may not have access because, just the nature of our buildings. Our buildings were unfortunately built just a few years too early for wireless and, and the later ones are all set up and we're good to go, but the others are built a little bit too early.
Well, the language is leasing. So are we leasing this stuff?
It's a lease to own.
Lease to own and the loan is not going to be all expended at one time, is that, is it spread out over a period of...
It's spread over five years.
So, so why, is this a requirement to have all the money in place for the leases?
Dale, I think he's asking if we're going to spend money immediately or if we're going to drag the payment for the purchases out, drag purchases out. The, the whole intent of this is to, is to start the process immediately, purchase everything. There is a, a project plan that's being worked on. It's, it's about a seven month loan window. So hopefully we'll get it a little earlier than that, but that's kind of where I think it's going to wind up.
And that will use up the loan?
That would, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we've been working on this since, wow, February or March, they all went around and, and did testing to the best places for wireless, there's little dots on the ceiling. So it, the prep work, everything we could do prior to that prep work has all been done.
You know, 15, 20 years ago, Lorraine City School District was ahead of most districts that were even around. We had smart boards and distance learning before people even knew what they were. And to be quite honest with you, it's, it's disappointing we haven't done this a lot sooner. Uh, you know, I mean, considering our financial situation, I get that, but this is certainly something that needs to be done and it should have been done, you know, 10 years ago, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgil?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fallis?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia.
Yes.
Okay. Want to go back and get the last three then, which would be items 8.01, which is the April 2015 standard financial package, item 8.02, our purchase orders requiring board approval, and item 8.06, our donations.
Motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Mr. Smith.
And second?
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams. Okay.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Fallis?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgil?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia.
Yes.
Reporting recommendations of the superintendent.
I have one more question, just FYI.
You know what? Put the clock up.
Don't get, you know...
I'm retiring, he's taking over.
You're in it with your time.
Put the clock down, you need it.
The shot clock.
Just a heads up that we made, uh, at the end of June, we have to close the year out and open up fiscal year 2016. So we're, we'll talk about it more in June, asking for a board meeting on June 29th. Uh, I think, I think it's a Tuesday, I believe. Just kind of keep that, keep that in the back of your mind. That's all I have, Mr. Damachia.
We'll discuss it later.
It's a Monday? Okay.
Thank you. Uh, reporting recommendations of the superintendent.
Um, I asked for approval of 9.01 through 9.08. Most of these are routine. We have some new people and after we approve them, I'll introduce some, but like I said, most are, are, are routine items.
Motion to approve item 9.01 through items 9.08.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgil?
Yes.
Mr. Fallis?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the person we just voted on, our executive director of student services, Dr. Kimberly Monacino. If you'd like to stand, she has, uh, spent many years in student services in, in districts similar to ours and she'll be, she'll be a great addition. So welcome, welcome aboard.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be joined in your school district. I'm excited about being part of the team and look forward to serving the students, the families, and working with staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Since we've added someone, does that mean we're losing someone?
Yes. I was going to wait for all this, but you already, you already approved her. Jane Hawks and I, Jeff, no, Jeff, we're good, but Jane Hawks and I are retiring on the same day. We started teaching almost the same time too, so.
Wow. Thank you.
Was that in that one room schoolhouse?
That was in there. It was called Larkmore.
Jim taught history, didn't he?
That's right. I was there.
Okay. Uh, recommendation of superintendent operation matters, I asked for approval of 10.01 through 10.10.
Motion to approve items 10.01 through 10.10.
Most of these are pretty explanatory. I don't know if anyone has any questions over any of these.
Discussion. That would be Mr. Sturgil.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Fallis?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgil?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia.
Yes.
Other matters, approval of 11.01 and we definitely want to approve this one because next year's going to be just as fun as this year.
I need a motion to approve item 11.01?
Motion to approve item 11.01.
Discussion.
This is so exciting.
Roll call.
Mr. Fallis?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgil?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia.
Yes.
Includes my report, recommendations.
Thank you. New business?
I do have a, um, kind of a new business or, I don't know, maybe it's a request from board members. I don't know. Uh, it relates to the, um, we haven't had this conversation, it's brought up privately, I think. Um, the bonfire, um, in the past years has conflicted with volleyball game. Yeah, I just thought about that as we were doing this athletic piece.
I believe Brian, Corey and I met and discussed that and took care of that, but I will follow up with that. We were to clear everything. I mean, we've even met with the park department on how we're going to do some things a little different also on, on student flow and traffic flow also, but let me follow up with Brian on that.
Thank you.
That's a good point. Thank you. Shouldn't conflict, there should be nothing that night.
Have the volleyball game at the bonfire outside.
A little beach volleyball, huh? Yeah.
Be the first time that happens.
Well, first time for everything.
Yep. I do have some new business here and I'd like to, uh, you know, obviously, you know, we're losing some great people in this district and, you know, Jane has done amazing work in this district and, uh, Mr. Tucker as well. Uh, you know, when you spend the majority of your career in a district, uh, you know, your achievements obviously speak for themselves, but, um, you know, losing, uh, Mr. Tucker is going to be a great loss to the district. And I have here that I'd like to read, a letter from the General Assembly of the State of Ohio. Uh, this was sent by Senator Keith Faber and Senator Gail Manning. And it reads, "On behalf of the members of the Senate of the 131st General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to extend special recognition to Tom Tucker on the occasion of your retirement as superintendent of Lorraine City School District. You are to be commended for you have completed an array of challenging duties with genuine distinction, proving yourself to be a tireless champion of scholastic excellence and a top-notch administrator. Throughout your 37-year career, you have enthusiastically demonstrated your profound commitment to education, revealing a wealth of energy and expertise as a band director, principal, human resources director, assistant superintendent, and now superintendent. You have inspired trust and confidence by motivating students and faculty alike to set ambitious goals and high standards for themselves. You can be proud that your vision and vitality would have impelled many who know you to dedicate themselves similarly. Without question, you have been one of Ohio's most precious assets and clearly, few of your colleagues can rival the depth and duration of your allegiance to education. In the wake of your departure, be assured that your numerous contributions will not be forgotten and that your fine character, keen intellect, and decisive leadership will be sorely missed. Thus, with great pleasure, we congratulate you on your retirement and wish you a happy and healthy future. And again, uh, signed by Senator Keith Faber and Senator Gail Manning." Which I thought was very nice and, uh, again, uh...
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Believe it or not, I am almost 60.
You don't look a day over.
God love you.
Fifty-nine.
Yes, you were born a couple of days after I graduated.
Shut up. We were English together.
Congratulations to Mr. Tucker and, uh, obviously we will, we will miss you. I'm sure we'll have this conversation a couple of different times.
Okay.
Any other new business? Committee reports and requests from board members.
I, I just wanted to mention one thing that I, I talked to, to Superintendent Tucker before. I got a chance to, to go to Lorraine High School on Thursday to watch their, uh, it was like an engineering trade show and, and there was, there was, there was some really unique things there and the kids were really, really good. And as I talked to the teacher, Mr. Bogan, he says that when he gave them these projects, they were to be innovative and they weren't to rein, to invent or, you know, to, to invent anything. They were supposed to take something and make it better. Well, there was a couple of items on there that, that were really, really worth mentioning and one of them, the kids took on the project of trying to peel an orange. And I says, I want one of those. Okay, but, uh, they're, they're still working on it. They said they're only sophomores and juniors, so they're trying to perfect that. But the real thing that really caught my eye was the kids that built a collapsible funnel. And I'm a maintenance person and there's always areas where you need to get into, to tight areas or you need different volumes. And it was such a unique thing. And just to make this, this product with the grooves and it was telescoping and stuff was, was just so unique and I was, I was just so, I, I spent a lot of time talking, talking to those kids, but, uh, I, I think maybe I, I see what we're having today, I think maybe they'll have something like this again. Maybe they'll, they'll be, if you get a chance to stop in and see it's, it's really unique. I, it's something that I think is, is, is kind of marketable in several different areas. I told them, I says, you probably thought of it for oil or something and I look at it for volumes, for food processing and, and, and other, I'm sure there's other areas you could use it in, but I was really, I spent a lot, I spent a lot more time there than I had anticipated because I enjoyed it. And so the kids did a real good job.
Well, they also invented a adjustable coat hanger. When the business group went through last October, uh, by the way, the business group toured the high school, Jeff wasn't able to be there and I was too old, but I went anyway, damn near killed me. All I can tell you is these are top CEOs. They just were odd, especially Tony Gallo, who is president of the, the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce and a sophomore, or excuse me, Admiral King graduate, who made us all aware right on that he was still upset about tearing down his alma mater, but when the tour was over, he was no longer upset. You saw his email. He's posting pictures on Facebook. I tell you folks, that high school is going to be the, the catalyst of change and how people view this district. It is unbelievable. And also on Friday, another thing, Carol did a wonderful story in the paper on Saturday. We had two guests, Dr. Joseph Novella and his wife, Ambassador Luba Ochesca, talked to those kids and I'm telling you, it was just marvelous. When she got up, she was born in Macedonia, came to Mansfield, Ohio when she was nine years old with her parents, to join her grandparents, graduated from Mansfield High, the Ohio State University. Not everything is perfect. But, and then Macedonia became a, a republic after the fall of the Soviet Union, she became the first ambassador from Macedonia to the United States. And so the first thing she told those kids, Mr. Tucker, and I mentioned this on the phone, "You are Titans," she said. "There is nothing you cannot do. Don't you ever forget that." And that's the kind of messages our kids need to hear, that, you know, and it was just wonderful. And Joe was, Joe made a comment, he made it in the evening as well, at the Historical Society. He owed a lot, he said, in his career. And he's a noted psychiatrist, author, TV show host, radio host in Washington, DC. And he said, "All I know is, I owe an awful lot, an awful lot, to my seventh-grade English teacher at Irving Junior High School, Ann Gannan." And there is actually an Ann Gannan fan club. She is now resident, Avon Oaks Assistant Living.